All right, I'm going to call this April 18th. Samamish Planning Commission meeting to order. And let me say it's very exciting to have some people in the room because usually it's just us talking to ourselves. So that's very exciting. Let's start out with roll call. Hesham Alkawad.
Here.
Mike Bresko is not here this evening. He's let us know ahead of time. Syed Savabian.
Here.
Sudranasankara.
John Baughman.
Here.
I am Mark Baughman. And Ajay Chakrapani also let us know that he could not be here this evening. All right, we still have plenty of brains here to get some work done. Next approval of the agenda. Anybody have any comments on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next approval of the minutes from our April 4th meeting. Any changes or comments on the April 4th meeting minutes?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
The public comments section. I know we received some material from the public, part of their comments. Is there a way we can hyperlink those additional items that they provide to the meeting minutes? Because I know we include just a description, a brief description of what the comment was about, but I think if we can somehow include the full comment, it will provide more context.
That's a good comment. I'll look into it and try it out. I think we should be able to do that.
Anything else? Thanks, Hesham. With that, we'll call the minutes approved and we'll look into making that adjustment. Next is public comment, non-agenda. So this evening's agenda is a continuation of the discussion of the updated 2024 comp plan and everything that goes with that. So if you want to make a comment about something other than that, now's the time. Three minutes per person. Does anybody want to make non-agenda public comment? Just go ahead and step up, say your name, where you're from, if you're in the city here, and you'll have three minutes.
On? No. Oh, yes. Hi, I'm Lisa Steele. I live in Samamish. My comment is about, let me just say what I wrote out. I'm a little nervous, but it's all fine. So I understand that on Tuesday, the city council adopted their amendment that was on their agenda to add some money to the budget for their on-call arborist position, which is great. I'm all for money for the trees. But my statement and hope is that you all help advise the city council as they're doing their 2024-2025 budget to adopt not an on-call arborist, but hire a full-time arborist. I think I am right in my research that in 2017, there was money budgeted for a full-time arborist, and that didn't happen. So with the budget that they have for the Davie Resource Group, I think that that could hopefully transition to a full-time arborist. But even more importantly than that, I really would love the committee to think about advising an urban forester position that would work hand-in-hand with the arborist as a similar and yet different jobs. Arborists focus more on the physiology and care of individual trees. With the huge town center project coming up, that is very important. But an urban forester handles the administration of tree-related programs and the human and material resources needed to carry out those programs. They're the administrators of tree planting and care in a community. We just had Arbor Day. We consider ourselves Samamish, our beautiful Samamish, a tree city. And I really think there can be the density that is hoped for in the town center, but more of a focus, more of a community focus on our trees. And I would encourage you, and I'll send this as a follow-up email, to look at pages 55 through 58 of the fantastic 2019 Urban Forest Management Plan. There were sustainability goals and objectives that are all still so relevant. There were seven urban forester goals, including maintaining our tree cover. There were six municipal goals, including designated an urban forester. And there were six community goals, including creating a citizens' tree board, which I will right now nominate myself for. And in summary, I would just offer up the last paragraph of the long and amazing Urban Forest Management Plan that is on the website. "The community views trees and the urban forest as fundamental to Samamish's identity as a community." Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else for non-agenda? Go ahead.
I'm Joyce Botenberg. I'm resident since 1986 up here. I'm writing, reading a letter that represents many of us. As I look to all of you to make well-informed decisions about future housing needs for our city and wearing my senior hat, I'm reminded of several newly-retired friends who have moved away due to lack of available right-sized housing for their stages of life. Squim, Lacy, Snohomish, Tacoma, Buckley, Bonny Lake, and more. They are the communities who now benefit from their relocation. Here's another cycle of life housing need. As an older widow, my children and teenage children are local residents. Our family conversation often focuses on how we'll regain as an intact family in Samamish when we don't see a housing market that could match each generation's future needs. A one-bedroom apartment or condo for me near amenities. A two-to-three-bedroom condo for my son and daughter, while as they retire and regain gains from selling their family home. And a studio apartment or starter house for my grandchildren when they finish their higher education. If the right mix of market rate housing could be available to us in the future, each generation will have the option of passing real property to those come behind. When I watch planning commission and council meetings, the numbers for affordable housing and market rate housing seem incongruous with what our future housing needs truly are. Surrounding-town planners have had the courage to think outside the box and accept that we are in a growth area. With a strong background in architecture and design, Sally Farrell, one of us, believes that the affordable housing numbers as they are and begin to meet the significant market rate housing supply shortages. She suggests focusing on various price points from $500,000 to $1.2 million and increase market rate housing by adding 6,000 housing units to the Samamish Town Center and another 1,000 in the Eastman Sub Area to the next comprehensive plan. If we build a city hub by stair-stepping at building heights from the borders to the center, moving virtually from two-story homes to the edge to eight-to-10, 12-story houses in the core, it's a win-win. Beautiful lake, mountain views resonate, the opportunity for a more diverse community. By building a city hub, we have happier and healthier people, more walkable neighborhoods, fewer cars on the road, public transportation, greater human diversity in all categories, and a city we can all be proud of for decades to come. Setting aside our personal views, isn't this the outlook we all want for Samamish? The needs of many residents over their life and generational legacy should outweigh the desires of a few. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Anybody else for non-agenda?
Yeah, my name is Frank Walkowski. I've been a resident of Samamish since 1984. I just wanted to offer some information for your consideration. I am a volunteer with Eastside Fire and Rescue. I have been for over five years. I was also a volunteer city worker here for several years when that program was going under their CERT, an advanced CERT program. I participate in a lot of community activities around Red Cross. The reason I asked, I wanted to speak to you is that there's a new program called Wildland Fire Mitigation. As you're probably aware, watching the news, we're in a severe drought state. Fire departments, both in eastern Washington and western Washington, are very concerned and see this as a continuing trend. Eastside Fire and Rescue is at the front of this effort, recently having trained some individuals in wildland fire mitigation. And there is a program to survey areas to address issues of concern around the potential for wildfires in our community. As much as we are a tree community, as we know, trees are also a fire hazard, and they need to be properly balanced. The idea of an arborist to help look at that and how we can best address that is worthwhile. And what I'm proposing is that at some point, we allow the members of Eastside Fire who are responsible for that, they basically do a drone survey, map out the area, and then take a look at issues around that, that that group be able to address the committee, whichever one is appropriate, how that information might be included in future planning and help us not only develop but preserve our community. You can reach me personally, Frank Walkowski, 206-725-2000. You probably have my information on file here as an emergency worker, or contact myself or John Braumberg through Eastside Fire and Rescue. We'd be happy to talk with you further and see about how we might pursue that information and future plans for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And thanks for your help in our community. Okay, who's next?
It's a popular evening. So we've been visiting the city council and learning more, and we've appreciated David's expertise. He's been teaching some of us some more information, and we've had some questions. So it's lovely to be here tonight. My name's Denise Darnell, and I've lived in Samamish since 2003. I admire all of you. Thank you for keeping up Samamish since the 80s. I actually work for Issaquah School District. I work at Discovery Elementary on 228th, and I get to work with all the beautiful, diverse families that we now have in our community. And I appreciate what you're saying about the arborists and the tree forest people, as well as the emergency services. I think that sounds like a great idea. I think one of the questions everyone's wondering is looking over the canopy of the trees and finding out how they're healthy or not and what we can do as a city. I tend to interact with a lot of different people through my neighborhood and through my volunteer work. And when I do mention the town center to people, I still really get a surprised reaction, even though I know the city has attempted with many open houses to get the information out. And I think one of the things we all really love is the trees, and we want them to be healthy, and we want to keep our tree canopy, and we want to be a tree city. So it's a little incongruous when we're planning to cut so many trees for the town center, many of the areas being 0% saving of trees, yet we're all saying we want to keep the trees. And when you talk to people in the community, they want to keep this beautiful community. So I feel like we're at this point where we have some big decisions to make, and I appreciate what you're doing. One of the other areas that no one has mentioned yet tonight is wildlife corridors. We've all seen our beautiful wildlife. We've all almost been heartbroken seeing the deer cross the roads, and I feel we need to protect them. There's many natural wildlife corridors throughout Samamish. So I feel like that should be an important proponent of the town center when you're deciding about things. And also, I know we do the beautiful Native American pledge in the beginning of the meeting. So I think having that perspective of respect of what Samamish was and how we want it to be and not have us look like Redmond. So I don't know if you've gone to the Redmond Town Center lately. They're doing some amazing things because they have the infrastructure. They're next to the freeway, and they already have metro, and they're going to have light rail. And they're making these really nice apartments, and I hope that they're affordable, I agree that's very important, near Redmond Town Center and near Marimore Park. And I guess they're redoing Redmond Town Center, which I didn't realize until a couple weeks ago. But we're not Redmond, and we have more trees than Redmond. And I think many of us want to keep it that way. So my ask of you is to just keep reaching out to the community, hearing what many of us want, and consider the environment first. My last four seconds are on emergency services. I am really worried when we get that many more people, how we're going to manage with all of our emergency services as well. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else for non-agenda?
Mary Victor, Samamish since 2000, right after it incorporated. Just a couple things. Thanks for everybody talking about the trees. When I started doing native plants for my yard and became a native plant steward, I learned that there's not only something called an arborist, which is usually ISA certified, which is required by the city, but there's also something called a hort arborist, which is a horticulturalist who's an arborist. And I think it would really be good if we ever get people on staff to do that. And if we can't get it in one person because there's so much tree work, I would hope like the volunteer coordinators and people that do the planting days, that they would be a horticulturist because it really makes a difference when you're doing things. But I do think that we need to have that. I'm also a little bit concerned because we lost Kelly Hildy to Mercer Island, and she was the lady who kind of was the champion for Davie Tree Resource Group and the Urban Forestry Management Plan. That was the plan that we threw everything to in 2015 and said, yeah, we're going to do one day, and it finally did pass. But we aren't doing a lot of active stuff on it. And I know that we didn't get, we wanted an arborist, but we couldn't get it because that money got moved to have the sustainability group and the climate action plan, which that was good. And now we're looking at the arborist, so we're kind of going back there. Also on trees, I know that people want to save trees in town center, but you're still building in areas like mine, which were on critical slopes where one single 10,000-square-foot lot will have 43 trees on it, and they all get whacked, and they never get built. The house has trouble getting built. So we really do have to protect the critical areas. And the way that you protect the critical areas is you allow density in town center and other centers and other subareas to have increased. And that way, you have more people for transit, less people driving. A lot of times, those people won't have kids. You'll be able to take your seniors and other people, and you'll have more diversity. So we really do need to build town center. So I'm going to focus my last minute on that. I did email in today a thing on the housing numbers for the 2024 comp plan. They've been set too low. One of the reasons they were set too low is that council was trying to downgrade everything. And at that time, there was a less-than-six-month sewer moratorium because Samamish Plateau Water, which I've attended those meetings since 2015, they were worried about their pumping and their capacity. So they just did a quick little moratorium just to check their things, and then they have enough capacity. In fact, they have enough capacity for 13,000 homes in their planning. They just did their wastewater comp plan, which they do every 10 years. There is not a sewer problem. So some of the numbers that we have were actually set too low, partly on that false premise. And you'll hear Paul Stickney talk about false premises, too. So what should the number be? It should go up, and you'll hear 6,000 for people in town center and 1,000 maybe over in James Eastman's new area, which could be ecotourism. I support both of those. The reason 7,000 needs to be a minimum is the affordable units at 2,100 will never get built unless you really put the number bigger. You're not going to build 21,000 or 16,000 homes, but 7,000 really is your new minimum. So please add that. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Looks like Paul has a comment.
Hello, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'm going to go a little bit out of the box and not stay within the lane that I walked in the room to talk about. There are, for certain, three major ideologies in Samamish over time when it comes to housing and growth. There was the initial 15, 17 years that really minimized housing compared to King County. Then there was four to five years that went even lower than that. Then there's been several of us that are suggesting optimal housing based on economic, demographic, and workforce needs in our community. Almost no one I know wants the King County pace of growth, which was extraordinarily high. So the thing I want to talk about tonight is numbers. And where did my newest numbers and my opinion on the range of what it will take to meet lifetime and legacy housing, mostly within centers, very little in neighborhoods, is between 10,000 and 26,000 units? Oh my God, some people will say. Well, if you understand all of the factors that go into setting the right housing mix for a community and then realize that 85% of our households were done not by us, King County, and of the 15% that Samamish built, 85 to 90% of them were large, single-family homes. So when I talk about false premises in two ways, I'm not being negative. I'm not chucking rocks. In the old-fashioned world, a premises is your house. While our housing supplies, our structures, don't meet what people need over lifetime and for future generations. So we can either stick with that and not remedy that, or have the opportunity to fill in different and diverse housing, primarily in centers, that's net positive, low impact, and as Don Jarrett would say, de minimis issues. So my recommendations that I've said recently, based on data done last year, and I'm floored by what I've been learning the last couple weeks. I got some new data. I'm going to share that in a couple weeks. I think my numbers may even be low in that range, but I'm going to leave that sit. Building 7,000 in town center in Eastman would have very little impact on the community. If you look at my NET 6, which is in the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force letters, you can read all the specificity about NET 6. So my goal is to preserve 95% of the city substantially how it is, to right-size town center and other subareas in the, in the future at far less number of units per acre than any other current centers in the region. So how big is big and how small is small? A lot more to talk about that. Appreciate the chance to comment.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Is there anyone on the call?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Mr. Eastman, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelist.
I had my hand raised before my ears started ringing. Well, actually, my ears constantly ring. Me like you, Mr. Baughman, suffer from tinnitus, but seems like there's quite a bit of discussion and some numbers being thrown out there at my property. And I don't know, a lot of you probably remember, there was a time when I came in with a proposal for something I thought was really great and aligned with what the city council focus was, and that was to put a tech campus on my property with ecotourist elements and not build any housing whatsoever because that aligned with their vision. The vision seems to have changed to housing, and I've submitted for a neighborhood center on my property. And there seems to be a little bit of confusion, and David Pyle has probably explained this over and over again with our growth target aligning with our low-income housing allocation. And that's a little bit tricky to explain and get everybody on board with, but it is what it is. But what I think it does is it doesn't really throw out there what we want as a city. And Redmond, you know what they want. Issaquah, I don't know if we know what they want as much, but if you zoom out on a map and look at Issaquah, it's sandwiched in between Cougar Mountain, Squawk Mountain, Tiger Mountain, and then to the north, all the greenery there. And they have trails and hiking, and their housing is really compacted in there in Issaquah Highlands and in Talis. You can pull up all the sales for the last year there, and there's all sorts of middle housing being sold under $1 million. And you know what they want, and they went after it, and they've accomplished it. Whether you like it or you don't like it, that's a whole nother story, but it's there. I'd encourage everyone to drive up through Talis. Look at Cougar Mountain Middle School there. It's probably got 30-to-40-foot retaining walls just below the senior center there. Samamish, we say we want, you know, middle housing, and we think that's going to be our focus, but we don't really know the numbers. I don't really need to know the numbers for my site. There's some stuff being thrown out there tonight. But for me, I want to know that the city is committed to a focus, whether or not it's me building a tech campus or if it's middle housing. It's beside the point. It's hitting, hitting home what we're going to focus on. So I'd encourage the planning commission, as much as they can, to drive home the focus of this comp plan update and the critical areas update. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anybody else?
No more comments.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I will say it's unusual for us to get a lot of public comments, so it's a very exciting evening for us. Maybe this is setting a new precedent. Okay, let's move on to our main agenda item for this evening, which is our continuing discussion about the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update.
Chair Baughman, David Pyle, Community Development Director. This evening, we have Tyler Quinn Smith with Framework Consulting, who is our lead consultant on our Comprehensive Plan Update. We'll be going through, or continuing to work through, the Comprehensive Plan and comments provided by commissioners. And I'll, I think we have a presentation, and then we'll turn it over to the commission for some conversation. And I'll turn it over to Tyler for the presentation.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Tyler Quinn Smith here from Framework. I'm stepping in for Jeff tonight to continue the planning commission review of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update for the city of Samamish. I've been involved in the project over the last year and a half. Think I've had the opportunity to engage with some of you commission members in the policy workshop last August, so it's good to see you all again. And tonight, we're going to carry on with the remaining elements that you were not able to get to on April 4th. So those elements include the parks and recreation element, economic development, capital facilities and utilities, climate change, and resiliency. I'm going to start by providing some overarching kind of themes that we've, we've picked up on in the CONBIO draft that planning commission members have been contributing to and reviewing. And then we're going to go into each of these elements and pull out the, the comments, the takeaways that you all have left for us. And as we get into the discussion this evening, we suggest that we keep it to about 20 minutes for each, for each element, recognizing that some of these are not nearly as complex as the land use or housing or transportation elements that you reviewed two weeks ago. But of course, that time is just, just guidance for how we split up the evening. So on the screen now are some overall themes that we've picked up on in your feedback on the review draft. Generally, throughout the document, there is some misalignment in the specificity of goals and a suggestion to, to align those at a kind of similar level of hierarchy throughout the, the document, which we're working on. And then similarly, lots of, lots of somewhat redundant policies. And so that's the case across many elements, and we're, we're working with the staff team to update some of the language and to rectify some of those redundancies that you've picked up on the plan. And then at the same time, we're finding that some of the policies are a little bit more distinct, more detailed than others, and just making sure that the, the hierarchy is pretty clear between a goal and a policy. And then throughout the, the document, there are suggestions to improve the legibility of graphics, of charts, and of maps. So jumping right into the parks and recreation element, this, this is something that's existed in past plans. And, and one comment that's come in on the review draft is, is seeing that there are several policies that get at wider trail network throughout the city. And the suggestion is to create an overarching goal that really tackles that vision for a coherent trail network throughout the city. And if this were the case, the commenter suggests that we could, we could consolidate some of the policies that are scattered throughout other goals that talk about the trail network. And then some policy consolidation is recommended in this element as well, particularly under Parks and Recreation Goal Number One. There's a couple policies in there that have to do with DEIB and intentional engagement with diverse groups, which could potentially be consolidated. Okay, economic development is hopefully not a super new element to all of you. This is something that we've, one of the few elements that's actually come forward, not only for planning commission review on its own in February, but this is also an element that has been vetted by city council later last year. And as we've read through your feedback on this particular round of the draft, there's a suggestion to think a little bit more broadly about the types of businesses that Samamish wants to attract over the next 20 years, seeing that some of the, the business types that are called out in the goals and policies may be a little bit more specific than what's required at the, or desired at this level of planning. And then, you know, support for some policy that we have in there around affordable business space, and the suggestion to maybe include some more strategies to make that possible in the future. And then just a general note that this, this element is certainly shorter than others in the plan, and that, that is, that's absolutely accurate. It's, it's the first time the city has taken on an economic development element, and one we've decided to keep relatively brief initially and look forward to kind of building it out as, as directed by planning commission and city council. Okay, capital. Okay, capital facilities and utilities. This in prior plans was separated into two separate elements. For efficiency's sake, we've combined it into one element. And a suggestion that's come through is to combine the first two goals, largely because these goals have similar kind of aspirations for making sure new capital facilities and public services are really aligned and supportive of the growth that's envisioned in the city or an expected in the city over the planning horizon. There's also a question in the document right now that asks whether or not a strategy would be relevant to include coordination with other agencies that don't provide services to Samamish, such as arch, state and federal governments, and environmental agencies. And so I'll clarify that they're not currently providing like utility services, and that's, that's the question in the draft right now, whether or not non-service providers in coordination with those entities should be called out in a specific policy. Okay, lastly, we have climate change and resiliency. Just one, one bit of feedback that's come in thus far on this element in the planning commission review draft, and that is the suggestion to include a strategy related to wildfire risk. So as we open it up for discussion on these various elements, I'll just remind you all that we continue to be available to you on the consultant team. The city staff team is available to answer questions outside of this meeting as well. There, there may be some areas that come up this evening that warrant additional discussion. Those are absolutely what we suggest to prioritize. And then, you know, recognizing that there is a threshold when it comes to like generating and discussing feedback on the plan. If there is something that really is substantial this evening, we suggest that the, the, the commission makes a motion to, to direct staff and the consultant team to carry out those updates. Okay, once again, the suggestion is just to, to start with about 20 minutes per element, recognizing that that can, that can deviate because some of these are a little bit more complex than others. And then finally, before we get into the discussion, I'll just remind you all that our plan is to be back with you in about a month with an updated draft that not only will include the feedback over the course of, of this month in the planning commission review draft, but there's also concurrent review underway with the Sustainability Commission on the, the climate change and resiliency element. We have external partners and service providers, such as the water and sewer districts, the school districts reviewing the draft separately, city staff is reviewing. There's public comment that we'll certainly have a role to play in the updated draft. And so what you can expect in what we are calling version two, that will reflect this feedback that we discussed tonight and that you've left for us in the draft, but also will include quite a bit of feedback that's come through these other channels as well. So with that, I'm going to minimize this screen, and I can pull open the, the draft that you all have had the opportunity to, to review over the last couple of weeks, and we can start with parks and recreation.
All right. I forgot to say welcome, Tyler, so welcome. And then, at the same time, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I think I'm going to suggest we'll do kind of like we did last time and just go around and give everyone the opportunity and see if they have any comments as we go through each section. So I'll start with you. John, you said you liked this end, so you get to go first.
I get to go first. Okay. Thankfully, this evening looks a little lighter than the land use and transportation and other elements we looked at last two weeks ago. So my comments this week are fairly short. Pet peeve on the parks and recreation were references active and passive recreation activity. I don't think frisbee playing or basketball is passive, so maybe structured or unstructured activity, or scheduled and unscheduled, but not passive. I know my wife walks the dogs, and I don't think that she would consider her activity passive. And then, Tyler, you also landed on sort of a key theme that I think came out of our last meeting, which was the citywide trail network and connectivity and interrelation between various elements, particularly parks and transportation. For example, Parks 4.1 and 5.3 don't mention the transportation plan in terms of those sorts of connectivity. Just as a matter of example, the economic development plan, even though it's shorter, is really well constructed in that it, it links very strongly to other relevant elements of the comprehensive plan. So I, I think for parks, oh, and one more comment, and I think we made this, this point last week, was use of pictures. There's a couple pictures in the, in this first draft that are not in Samamish. They're seashore beaches or, you know, it just makes sense to, to try to have pictures that are in Samamish that, that we and the residents can relate to. So that's all I've got on parks. Thanks.
Thank you. Suda? Well, we're going fast. Asham?
Sayed?
I want to go back to John's comment about the passive and active parks. David, do you know how many passive parks do we have in the city?
I think it depends how you define it. Not offhand, but really, I think it depends on the definition of passive versus active and structured versus unstructured. But we're curious what suggestions you might have about how we could better present that topic.
Well, one suggestion is to maybe make more investment converting the passive parking into the active parking, to encourage people to participate in different activities that's not available in active parking, in active parks.
Thank you.
Let's talk about a couple of other things. Is that, and that is nothing to do with the passive or active. It's just question about that, some of the issues that are important to me. For instance, I didn't see any reference to the use of a low-impact pavement treatment within the, within the park's properties, like, like walkway driveways within the park.
So the, the question there would be is whether that is best suited in the parks element, which it's a good suggestion, and we can definitely look at that, or whether it would be also well-suited in the climate change and resiliency element, or whether it would be potentially well-suited in the land use element, or even the utilities element related to stormwater.
And transportation, too.
And transportation. There's, so it's, it's the question of where that best fits, but the, the theme, I think, of what was, what was this, was a technology, pervious surface technologies?
Pervious surface technology.
Yeah, so that's definitely one that we can track and look through the document and find that for.
Some people, they call it porous pavement. Also, some references to some of the activities that we should be really encouraging and recognizing. P patch programs in all parks, gardening, demonstration activities, webinars, educational. And then using, taking advantage of the public television access as far as providing information and educating the public and encouraging people to recognize the importance of the trees and open spaces and so forth. There is a, on page, figure ED1 dash 1 talks about, and I don't understand exactly what is that, what is the purpose of it. Page 73. What is that figure tells us? I think that one time we discussed this briefly, but I don't remember. Figure ED dash 1. Yes. Can, can you go over and, and kind of explain what, what, what are we talking about?
Is it, Sayed, is it the one on the screen here?
Yes, exactly.
So this is in the economic development section, right?
Economic development, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's just circle back to that when we get there.
Economic development. Let me see if there is anything else that I have on the park. I, I thought that we talked about, on some, some other time, about the possible encouraging the public and, and even some organization to adopt, adopt the trees, adopt the park, adopt the streets. A lot of jurisdictions, they, they use that as a way of actually providing some funding for some of the park and rec activities. And I didn't see that much of reference to that in the text.
It's a really intriguing idea, so thank you for that. We could take a look at that, how to possibly thread that in here.
Sometimes you see some, in some jurisdiction, even on a freeway, say that, okay, this was subsidized, or the funding was provided by McDonald or by whatever. So we can, we can take advantage of it, bringing some revenues to the city for some of the park, park activities. Let's see. No, that's it as far as parks. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sayed. I have three things that are fairly quick. I would say maybe at least my experience in reviewing this version of the comp plan, and I've kind of gotten the idea from a couple of others, too, that there was some meaty stuff at the beginning and consumed a lot of time, and I have not gotten into the details as much in these later sections. So that's my fault, but I have to admit that some of my comments and glancing through this tend to be more high-level as a result of that. One is, I, I think that in an overall review of the parks and rec section, it's important to me at least that we do a couple of things. One is make sure that it's well-coordinated with our pros plan, because we spent a lot of time on it, and I think everybody felt like that was a great plan that was put together, and a lot of people were involved. And I just, because of that, it makes me feel like it'd be really important to look at them side by side and look for any incongruities, or make sure they're well-connected together. And they're at a different level, but still, making sure that they're well-coordinated would be important. Another thing is, these other two comments are really about areas of focus. And I know that the, in the comp plan, this is a very high-level plan, of course, by nature. I do think, however, that we should make sure to ensure that the, the parks plan, parks, parks and recreation portion of the plan is, and I'm going to use the word diverse, that word's gotten a lot of connotation recently, but what I mean by that is, when you talk to some folks in the city, they want passive. I'm going to, I'm going to be careful here with Johnson right next to me, but, you know, they want to, they want to have natural areas to go on a trail. There's other people who have young kids who want more baseball parks. There's people who want to, you know, take their kayak out on Pine Lake. There's a lot of diversity in what people want to do within the community. And as the community continues to grow, there will continue to be that diversity of interest that the parks can serve. And I think it's really important that the plan focus on that as, as a development goal over long term, is to support a lot of different opportunities for recreation within the community, because that'll, that's going to change over time. And then the last one is, and I have to admit, I haven't looked at this in a bit, so I don't recall, but, you know, we're, sometimes we, I think we focus on the city a lot, and that's great. We also are right next to a fantastic lake in Lake Samamish. And because we're challenged a bit with access to that lake, although we have some good access now because of what things that the city has done, we should make sure not forget about all of the things that the city can do to facilitate all the activities that go on on Lake Samamish. And like I say, if you don't, I actually am fortunate, and I'm able to spend time on Lake Samamish in the summer, and you don't realize, if you don't do that, how much activity there is beyond just wakeboarding. There's a lot of that. But there's people that are rowing out there, and people on their paddleboards, and there's fishing that goes on. And in the offseason, there's actually some pretty good bass fishing, I think, at, at times. And there's just a lot of stuff that goes on in that lake. And we shouldn't forget what a big deal it is to live right next to Lake Samamish. And the plan should kind of reflect that. Those are my comments. Anybody have anything else on parks and recreation? Go ahead, Sayed.
I forgot to mention about that Mrs. Steele, she brought up the point as far as the need to have a permanent arborist on board. David, I think that I asked you this question before. Right now, when the city staff reviews a development project, commercial development and all that, and comes to the issues related to trees and all that, how you handle it?
We have on-call, we actually have two on-call arborist contracts in the event that there's a conflict with one of them. And what we do is we, you know, an applicant is required to submit their, their own arborist reports. We then use our on-call arborist to review their arborist reports and verify them and validate them. There's, there's quite a bit of back and forth and a big process that goes along with it, but we have an on-call contract. And we actually use the on-call contracts so much in the last year and a half that we had to actually renew the contracts and increase the value of them because we ran out of funds. So that was what was referenced, was taken to council just earlier this week so that we had the ability to continue to review development applications and use the on-call arborist for that function.
The second question has to do, again, with the comment that we heard over and over again about the concern of citizens as far as losing so many trees because of town center development. What are the current regulations in respect to replacing or replanting trees as much as they're taken out?
It depends on the zone. So in the TCA zone, there is no tree retention requirement, and there is technically no tree replanting requirement, except that there is a landscape requirement. And the landscape requirement requires the placement of full-size, what will become full-size trees. So an applicant is required to submit a landscape plan prepared by a landscape architect that basically meets the, the ultimate built condition, you know, full-growth condition of what the, what the plan envisions. Keep in mind that the, the town center plan, and I, I don't know the, offhand, I can't remember the exact number of years, but it's been in place for about 15 years. So those rules have been in place for quite some time. So everybody at this point in time in the city should, should know those rules exist. It shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. Now, whether or not you read them and know the details and ins and outs, I agree with that, that they're kind of confusing and complex. So we're here to answer questions and help people, guide them through it. If they have any questions, they can feel free to reach out to us. We're happy to meet with them and talk through it.
So do you see any reason not to change those guidelines and maybe provide some language in the comp plan update to mandate replacement of those trees that will be lost because of the town center development?
So that, you know, that's a suggestion that you have, and if the commission is on board with that, that's something that we could look to add into the plan.
Because that, that addresses the concern that we hear from, from the citizens.
Yeah, I mean, the, the balance is, is where do you put the trees? You know, we're, we're looking at, at a, you know, you also heard tonight from several other people about the need for housing and several thousand units of housing in the town center. So, you know, the, I don't, I'm not trying to be flippant by saying this, but which is it? Do you want the housing, and do you want the space for the housing, or do you want the trees? And a lot of people will say, well, we want both. And that's what we're trying to achieve. But, but if you start to mandate things like a certain amount of percentage of planting or number of trees to be planted, well, then that, that limits our ability to try to find the balance, because we're now up against a hard requirement.
So what is the possibility of relocating those trees that under current regulation would have to be basically?
Can I, Sayed, can I suggest, this isn't really a topic for the, the section of the comp plan. And in addition, the tree retention policies are a pretty detailed thing that are not going to go in the comp plan. So maybe we should have a conversation about that outside of the comp plan review. Okay, Tyler, let's move on to the next section of the comp plan. All right, Sayed, since you had a question about this graphic, let's start at that in, under economic.
Need a little bit of explanation. What, what, what is the conclusion? What are we, I, I see what are we talking about, but what exactly the purpose? I don't understand. The relationship between the land values and?
Tyler, if you could speak to this graphic a little bit?
Yep, absolutely. So, great question. This is showing the relative land value, which is essentially the, in this case, in red, the commercial land value per acre, which is a way of simply showing is a way of simply showing the productivity of land. And so we've provided this shot at a kind of a regional scale to show that some of the neighboring cities have, have more productive commercial uses on smaller chunks of land in some cases. But in any case, it is, they are generating more value per acre. And so that in turn provides more value to the city's coffers, more tax revenue. And it's just, it's an increasingly popular way to just, once again, show the productivity of land.
And the conclusion?
Oh, and the conclusion here, of course. Yeah, so you can see some, some extruded parcels. So this is at the parcel level, presumably at the town center and at Inglewood here in kind of the middle of the city, suggesting that those, those parcels do generate some, some decent return in, in value per acre across the city. But when compared to neighbors such as Issaquah and Newcastle, Redmond and so forth, there are districts, downtown cores and so forth in these areas that do tend to generate more value per acre because of intentional economic development, more mixed use growth in those areas, higher performing commercial spaces. And it's just to kind of level set how on a value per acre basis Simamish is doing compared to its peers, just from a visual perspective. We haven't necessarily quantified this, but this provides that visually.
This is based on existing conditions, right?
Correct.
Is there any way that we can look at that? If the comp plan is approved and implemented, what would be the change in this graphic? Are we getting closer to the other cities as far as the ratio between the land values and commercial activities?
That is a great question. And it certainly would be an interesting challenge to attempt to model something like that. But hypothetically, we, we could, you know, take the assumptions that may be the output of certain zoning changes or certain economic development priorities in this case, and be able to, you know, of course, it'd be riddled in a lot of, a lot of factors, but we could begin to kind of piece together some, some increases in, in land value according to the strategies that the city's going to roll out or the, the land use changes and the zoning changes. But I will admit that that forecasting or modeling would be quite challenging.
So I can add to that, that I agree with everything Tyler said, well put. And that really that would be the product of an actual economic development program at the city. So what you're seeing here is, is the first step towards the city trying to find its path to addressing economic development. Keeping in mind that historically, with the last two versions of the comp plan that we have, we have not had an economic development element in our comprehensive plan. So really what we're doing is we're, we're wading into the pool, so to speak. So with that in mind, what we're trying to show is that there are different ways to approach economic growth in a city. So in addition to things like home businesses and having adequate capacity for retail that's within the needs of what the community is interested in, there are also different ways to package retail with, in mixed use forms that result in a higher yield or a higher, a higher productivity of land. The town center has the TCA zone, which really is trying to get at probably the, the highest land value in the city that we have. We also have included with the future land use map, several areas where you might see future planning happen. We're not, these are not, these are not creating subareas, but it's, it's pointing out where we would like to start looking at additional subareas in the city, which would also then result in some additional density and mixed use type scenarios that would bring a higher yield in land, land value. So that could be a neighborhood center like the Eastman Properties or some other areas in the city where there are small intersections where you might see some retail with some residential above it, or some larger areas like the, the Inglewood, the Pine Lake, or the Klahani Centers that are already there and are really a great opportunity for us to repurpose existing asphalt so there'd be minimal environmental impact and, and to see some additional retail and density brought into those areas. So that's one of the ways this could provide a vision down the line for how those are planned and designed. That's why we think it's a really great addition to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to just stick my nose in here because I think I would kind of echo a little bit of what Saad said here. I think that the risk of this graphic, and I'm not sure I know how to solve this, is you look at it and it sort of suggests that we want to be like Redmond or we want to be like Issaquah. And as we heard tonight in public comment already, and I've heard many times in the past, you know, there's people that will say, we're not Redmond, we're not Issaquah, we don't want to be them. And I think with, the hard part here is, again, I'm identifying a problem without a solution, but the hard part here is you see this graphic and you sort of, you could come to that conclusion. Now, if you take the time to read the text, then it becomes apparent that that's not our goal, that's not our plan, it's different than that. But I'm not sure if there's a way to keep people from getting that impression from this graphic without reading in detail because it's a common thing, right? That people look at the pictures and don't dive into the text. And I'm just, I don't know how to do that. But I do think that there will be some reaction to this graphic that way that says, well, that's great. Are you saying we want to be like Bellevue? We don't want to be like Bellevue. Of course not. Read what it says and you'll figure that out. But there's, there's like a little bit of a chasm between the, what the text says and what you could infer from the graphic without some kind of context. So I, I still think it's fascinating. And as a curious person, I want to be able to reach up here and zoom in on it. But I do think that the general folks that might read this would, would maybe not take the time to read the details and understand what it's trying to say. So again, I'm not sure how you solve that, but maybe there's a blurb in here somewhere that says, hey, by the way, read what it says. If you want to make a comment, it's do it at the end. Make sure you keep track and then do it at the end when we do public comment related to the agenda. Okay, Saad, I interrupted you.
No, no, the other comment that I was going to make that we have heard so many times that we should be comparing ourselves with Mercer Island. Mercer Island has almost the same kind of situation, three small, three or four small commercial activities. So I'm wondering if, if we put Mercer Island into this bar and see how, how close we are to the Mercer Island. I realize Mercer Island has population half of us.
And you can see Mercer here on the, on the graphic. And the other differences in Mercer Island is they have light rail, they have a freeway, they have a very dense downtown core. So their, their, their land productivity in their downtown core is already established. And you can see the, the graphic with the, it's right in the middle, right between Bellevue and Seattle, right there. I apologize if your monitor doesn't show. If you look up there, you might see it better on the screen up there.
Yes, yes. Wow. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Hey, Sean, you have comments on the section?
The fact that we have an economic development plan, part of the comprehensive plan, it's something great. We, we reviewed it in the past and I think we all agreed that it's very needed and we need to be creative about how to attract businesses and how to attract new businesses. I kind of agree with the comments that Mark and Saad said here about the, about the chart, the figure. I like it and I'm also excited about it. The first impression I had was the wow. But then my second one was, does it fit here? Does it put us in a comparison? Because now it's attracting me more than the, more than the words. And the way I look at it, it's basically a comparison. Are we saying we are better or worse? We all know, we cannot be compared to them for reasons we all know. They have Microsoft, they have malls, they have different reasons to become more economically attractive and to be performing better. The same thing I can say about the figure in the next page, the one that, that's numbers about the population and how many people work in the city. Again, it makes my mind go through the, wow, we don't like people that much, that we don't provide opportunities. Look at, I think it's Bellevue. There are more people who work in Bellevue than people who live in Bellevue. But they have them all. There's no way we can be like them and Essico. They, so if, if it's up to me, I will figure out a way to do them differently so I don't get into the comparison. And what that is, maybe just, this is where we are and this is what the average city, or this is, if we get to there, it will provide these opportunities instead of comparing to individual cities. But other than this, yeah, it's, it's a great plan.
Thank you. This is great feedback. We'll, we'll definitely try to find a way to, if it is retained, present it properly so that it doesn't result in comparison. But if not, then try to find a way to also present alternative paths for the city and how they might result in a different economic value on, on use of land.
My perspective is totally different. I love this graphic because I'm looking at it. I'm like, okay, what can we do to bring more businesses to us? We're not going to be Redmond or anybody else, maybe a little bit like Issaquah, but not much. But then I see Duval there. I'm like, oh, they're, they don't have as much as we do. So for me, it's a different perspective. So if you put Carnation there, maybe it'll look better. It balances it out. So, but the only question I have, David, is just, just to learn. Issaquah and I, I think like we're a little bit closer, but how come they have more income or whatever that bar is higher than us? What are they doing different? That's all.
I know Tyler, if you have a thought, I'll, I'll give you my thought first and then see if Tyler has, has a more educated thought on it than I do, which is, I, I think it's, it's all about density and use of land.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with what David just said. It is, at the end of the day, density is, you know, it is a serious contributor to this. There are, you know, highly productive, smaller lots in the urban core of Issaquah, which are beginning to benefit from public investment in, even though it's 2040 something that it's going to come, but the public investment in light rail. And so those are huge factors that, you know, are obviously giving a place like Issaquah, Redmond and so forth, huge advantages. To my knowledge, there aren't like significant employers in, in this, this spikier part of Issaquah, but I may be misunderstood there. So that's probably something also to consider.
Thank you for that. Maybe we just need to put Carnation there and we're balanced it out.
Well, one of, one of the things also I think that's important to keep in mind is the way Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 breaks down the, the urban geography groups and that Simamish is in the cities and towns category, which is one of the reasons why we have the growth target that we do. And in the cities and towns category, I recall there's 19 cities, you know, and they, they include cities like North Bend and Snoqualmie and I'm trying to, or Newcastle. And, and so, but, but not included in that group, I think is more important is Mercer Island is not in that group. Issaquah is not in that group. Redmond is not in that group. So we're in a, in a group of classifications of cities that are all for all purposes significantly smaller than Simamish is. But the reason why we're in that group is because, you know, like you all know, is we don't have access to a freeway. We don't have a highway that goes through town. We don't have an already established commercial center, large commercial center. There are all these qualitative factors about Simamish that put us in the, the urban geography group of cities and towns. So when looking at this, if there's a way to, to alert the, the user of this graphic, because I think the one thing I'm hearing here is that this graphic is making you think.
Yes.
Which is one of the reasons why we want to have it in the comp plan is to make people think. But the, the trick there is making people understand that Simamish is fundamentally in a different geography group than most of the, all of the cities that are showing these, these big spikes. So, so that, you know, I don't know if there's a way for us to put an overlay on there that show cities and towns, like that are in our category, or if that's even something that could be explained because it's so nuanced.
David, the category that PSRC use, if I'm not mistaken, is called suburban cities?
Not this round. It's cities and towns. Yep.
So I just would comment that one of the differences, I think, too, is that if you look at Redmond and Issaquah and Bellevue, they've been around for, I don't even know, 100 years, 150 years. And so they've gone through lots of variety of development and development periods and growth periods and slow periods, whereas Simamish has really mostly happened in the last 30 years and has very developed through a very homogeneous period of time. So we have a homogeneous situation. One suggestion I do have, this might seem goofy, but it's almost like put a, put a bubble up at the top here and with an arrow and says, you know, where is Simamish headed? Or where should Simamish go? Or what should Simamish do? Sort of ask the question, which leads people then to look at the stuff next here, right? It's, it sort of gets them away from, obviously, we're not the same as these. And we're not saying we should be the same as these, but what should we do? And I don't know, some kind of a, a leading graphic that'll lead you into the, reading the text. That's a suggestion. John, what do you have on economic development?
So I want to skip to the SWOT analysis page. And I can relate this back a bit to the graphic and David's already mentioned it, but under weaknesses, we're isolated from transportation centers and that, that's everything. The other thing about economic development planning is particularly for the big stuff, the really tall bars. One of those tall bars in Issaquah is probably Swedish Hospital. Well, we're not going to have another Swedish hospital in Issaquah. So when ED managers are arm wrestling, it's an either or. They either get the Google campus like Kirkland did or go somewhere else. So that, that really big stuff probably doesn't fit in this picture. And I don't think our economic plan really outlines that. It's more about expanding business, small business opportunities, getting us a hardware store, for example. Have we heard that one before, maybe? And minimizing our leakage so that we're capturing those sales tax dollars here. So Tyler, if that means rejiggering maybe some of the order of this stuff, because I think this SWOT page is really key to the whole setting the framework for the, the whole economic development plan. I don't want to rewrite this for you guys, but just think about the order that this comes in and sort of those bigger goals and vision. And then you can get into the, sort of the nitty gritty detail and explain why our bars are lower and probably always going to be lower because that's the way we want it.
The only comment I have actually about this section is, again, a higher level comment. And that is, first I would say, as a new section being added to the comp plan, I think it's great and a good start. And it'll be interesting to see how it gets used as it, you know, becomes part of the comp plan and gets referred back to. I would like to see a little bit more emphasis on the sort of short term versus long term. I think that because this is a, you know, the things that we'll do are not necessarily new in and of themselves. But as people develop strategies or evaluate things that we might have as programs or changes in ordinance or whatever, there's a much bigger difference between short term and long term. And because this is a 20-year plan, you know, we're, we're from an economic development standpoint, if our goal is to improve our tax diversification by increasing business within the community, then there's a short-term effort that would focus on what we have without necessarily building a huge amount of stuff. And then there's a different thought process that would go into a 20-year, you know, what are we doing 20 years from now? Or what are we going to aim for 20 years from now? I'm not even sure where Town Center fits in that, probably kind of in the middle. But there's a big difference to me between short-term objectives and long-term objectives. And I'd like to see some better emphasis. I'd like to see some better emphasis or hints or suggestions in this section about that. Anybody else on the economic development? Sayed?
I think that we talked about it a long time ago. What is the possibility of asking for economic development coordinator with city and then recognizing as part of economic development plan?
So that's really sort of where this goes is, well, what's next? And I think Mark raises a good question, kind of relevant to that is short-term, long-term, is, you know, short-term, are we working on launching an economic development program? And with that would come the need for an economic development coordinator. That's when we start to get into things like business licenses and trying to facilitate small business growth and, you know, all the incubation type things.
Marketing the city.
And that's really up to, you know, your comment direct to the city council. That's not, you know, I'm here trying to provide a pathway. And if the, through the comp plan, we adopt ultimately policies that allow us to do that, if your city council prioritizes that on a work plan and identifies those positions as something that are desirable and in balancing the budget with the limited resources they have, choose to fund those types of positions because that is their priority and put it on the work plan, then we'll do it. But the challenge we have is that we have lots of different things that we want to do as a city, a limited budget and a limited number of staff people that we have, a limited number of full-time positions that we can actually hire and maintain. And we really need to sort out our priorities going forward. We're trying to do that with the comp plan as a starting point. But ultimately, then it becomes, you know, it's up to elected officials to decide as they go through the budget process.
Would it be helpful at this point to recognize that and make that as a recommendation, as a part of economic development section of the comp plan?
I'd say that's more of an implementation recommendation that the commission could make at the point of public hearing when making recommendation to the city council that we have this plan and that we would really like to see implementation take shape in this way. So that's something we could work with you on to craft when we get to that point of public hearing.
Thank you.
I would say the interesting part about that is that if the economic development plan is successful, then there should be more opportunities to, it's a self fulfilling prophecy, right? That is the one section here where if it is successful, then it contribute, can contribute to a better tax base and more of those kinds of opportunities. Okay, let's move to the next section. Ajim, did you have some?
I can add something if you want me to. When you were talking about incentives, I know we talked about incentives from taxes. But another way, maybe if the city owns land, part of the 240 acres, if the city can work with developers in a way that will lower the cost of the development, maybe they pay for the land over 20, 30 years instead of paying for the land now. I know if I can develop today, I will be able to open something more than if I have to pay for the land and develop, things like those.
Yeah, the incentive on startup costs and startup of development. And that's the one, the one that we've identified, that we've heard is the need for, you know, we have, I know because of code enforcement, we have businesses that have outgrown their homes. And the challenge is, is where do those businesses go in the community? If we don't have appropriate space, commercial space available for those, then they leave the city and they go to a place where they have appropriate retail space available. You know, the city of Kenmore, for example, has what they call a business incubator component to their economic development operations. And they have space where they offer sort of a stepping stone where businesses can lease retail space. It's a pretty interesting program. Kirkland has a really, a great program where they actually have, they do training for small businesses. And then they have a pitch night where they have, you know, a community meeting where they, the small businesses come and do kind of like a Shark Tank thing. And there's a grant that you can win if you win pitch night as a small business. So they're trying to grow that sort of small business approach to foster that approach, you know, or that, to create that culture in the community.
Thank you. So did you have some? Go ahead.
Yes, I do. I'm looking at the SWOT analysis and it says motivated city staff. And I see that and the, you know, the experience and the amount that I learned from you guys. Thank you so much. For the threats, I see the declining school enrollments. Are we seeing any of those as of now? Like, I know Bellevue is going through that declining school enrollments.
So the Issaquah School District, I know, and I'd have to go, no, excuse me, the Lake Washington School District does have a forecasted enrollment drop or decline. Basically, what you would, you know, and I can send you all a link to their capital facilities plans, which has their forecasts, their enrollment forecasts from their demographers. And you can see how each school district stacks up. But it is something across the, you know, the region that we're seeing. I know that in my district, we're seeing the combining of elementary schools because that's where the census population is starting to drop. And that's forecasted to move all the way through the high schools at some point. So the challenge is, is if you're seeing the tail end of a spike where it's really hard to fit all the students in the brick and mortar facilities that they have, the districts are grappling with the choice of do we build more brick and mortar facilities now, knowing that there is a big drop in enrollment? And how can you justify that brick and mortar facility today if you're not going to be using it tomorrow?
All right. Anything else on economic development? Okay, Tyler, let's move on.
So just for context, we have decided not to go into the shoreline element this evening. That was not among the list of four. David, you can comment on why we're not doing that now, but it's related to the complexity that needs to be carried in this draft due to the city shoreline master program.
Sure, yeah. I'll just take a second here. And so we, our shoreline master program is updated on a separate cycle from our comprehensive plan. That's not to say that we shouldn't take note of anything we want to see changed with the shoreline element. And then we can take advantage of that going forward when we do update our shoreline master program following state law. It's important to keep in mind that the city's shoreline master program is the city's, but it is also held by the state. We simply administer it on behalf of the state. So while it is our program, the city, the State Department of Ecology does have review authority over our shoreline master program and our shoreline element. And any changes made to that would have to also then go to Ecology and be approved. There is a standard update cycle. I think some of you were on the commission when we last went through that process. And we will be going through it a couple of years after the comprehensive plan. So it's queued up right behind the comp plan.
Okay, so I'm assuming since we're on capital facilities, utilities, that's the section we're talking about next, right Tyler?
Yes, please.
Can you, maybe would you make, give us just like a one minute, this is what this section is as a reminder? We're getting pretty deep into it here. So I think that would be helpful.
Sure. So this, as a reminder, combines what was previously two separate elements for capital facilities and utilities into one. And is, it is recognizing that not only does the city need to plan for a certain number of housing units and a certain number of jobs over the 20-year planning horizon, but it needs to plan for adequate capital facility needs to support that growth. So this is everything from the services that the school, or excuse me, that the city does not directly manage, such as the school district, the sewer and water districts, utilities like electricity and natural gas, to the facilities that the city does have direct kind of control over, such as the administrative buildings and some of the vehicles that are owned by the city and things of that nature. And so this element is relatively brief in volume one, which is the focus of this evening. Now, I will remind you all that there is a second volume to every single element with more technical background material to support the goals, policies, and strategies in volume one. And so for capital facilities and utilities, that is where we will establish, if I'm not mistaken, the adopted levels of service for each facility type. And the city is also kind of taking on a larger effort to create a capital facilities plan, which is highly related to this. And maybe David can speak on the interrelationship with that as well because I think it's worth understanding before we talk about the goals here.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Tyler. So the, we've been through these other elements thus far, right? And we've talked about, you know, the vision statement, land use, housing, parks, economic development. And what this element now, as Tyler has indicated, is trying to do is show what the level of service of, what service is the city and other service partners provide, what that level of service is. And given the growth target and given our land use and housing goals that we have in the plan, how are we going to ensure that we're providing that level of service with that? Whether it be about a park space or road, road services, or police services, fire services, schools, et cetera. And what this, this element then does is it identifies how, what facilities and infrastructure the city and the city's utility, or the city's service partners provide, what types of pieces of infrastructure we have, buildings, pipes, roads, parks, playfields, those kind of things, and what upgrades to those we might need, what additional, you know, overhaul of parks we might need to make, what additional pipes might need to be put in the ground, what additional school capacity might need to be brought online. Then that gets translated into a longer-term capital facilities plan, which identifies down the line, you know, forecasts out all of the different projects or upgrades that the city might need to make. And it signs a project description and a value, a cost, a cost estimate of that project. And then the city takes that and then rolls that into the actual budget itself. So when we're working on our budget, we then do capital facilities planning, which forecasts out at six years and identifies, these are the projects that we need, we will need to do over the next six years. These are the costs. Then that's at the facilities planning level. This is a complicated connection. So I apologize if it's, my description is not that refined. Then finally, you get to the budget, which is the two-year, the two-year budget. So the city needs to have both a plan that sets the level of service so we know where we have deficiencies or where we're forecasting deficiencies. So we know where to make investments in order to maintain that established, agreed upon level of service. Then we need to identify, well, what projects might we need to actually build to do, to deliver that, to make up for those forecasted deficiencies. And that's over a long period, right? That's a 20-year forecast. We have all these things we want to do. Then you get down into the facilities planning level, which is a six-year plan, which you're required to show that you actually are funding it and you are forecasting where the funding is coming from. Then it gets down into the budget at the two-year level where you're actually literally showing where the revenues are coming from in order to budget for the delivery of those projects. So this is setting that first layer, which is identifying the levels of service that we want as a community, where the deficiencies might be, and what types of things we might need to be doing in this 20-year planning horizon in order to ensure that we maintain those levels of service. If that made sense, then that's great.
Thanks, David. John, do you have comments about this section?
Sure. This section felt pretty dry, but it's perhaps a lot more important than we realized. There are kind of two sides to it. There's the, David delved into this a little bit. There's the side that the city controls directly, say New Ballfield or New Park. And then there's all of these other service providers, public and private utilities, that we, the city needs to coordinate with. And if we think about climate change driving higher utilization of electricity, that means more capacity for electricity, which means land use has to have the capacity to cite more substations. So the web of connections in here, I think, is really critical to understand and just how important this planning is to the future of our community. So that's, that's editorial on my part, so.
So David, is this the first time we had this capital facilities plan? Or we already had one and we're updating that?
Yeah, this is, this is an element that's required and has always been required by state law. And this, I think, is one of the most critical pieces of conversation, one of the most important elements, because in my nine years here at the city, I have, most of the conversations and points of tension have been around adequacy of things like transportation services, school services, the rate of growth versus the delivery of infrastructure to support the level of service related to that service. So that's why I think, you know, while this, I definitely agree with Commissioner Bachmann, this is, you know, a dry topic, but really important because this is where we show that we are planning for the future. And it's not an exact science. That's, I think the thing that people want is this to be an exact science. But development comes at different waves and it's kind of hard to predict. So we have to be able to be nimble and be ready to implement projects when we need it in order to maintain that level of service.
It's very important. I agree. Thank you.
Ajim?
I do not have questions, but I see that Mike Presco had a couple of comments there. I'm not sure if they were addressed from before or no. And they are listed under page 170. They might have been addressed, so.
I don't know, Tyler, if you have those available?
Yep. So if you pardon my switch to this slide, we've encapsulated those comments here. And the suggestion was made to somehow combine the first two goals because they're very similar in trying to, you know, plan for adequacy, given the growth that's expected. And retaining, you know, the quality of life, the level of service, the, and so forth, that's expected of the community as it grows. And so that was the first comment. The second comment from the commissioner was about coordinating with entities that don't provide services directly to Sammamish, but of course are, you know, part of this ecosystem as the city grows. So those are entities such as Arch, which is a regional collaboration for housing that kind of presides over east King County, state and federal governments and environmental agencies. And so with that, well, I guess with that in mind, I can keep the two, this slide open, just to show kind of the comparison of these first two goals. And we can discuss that if the commission desires.
I only brought them up because Mike is not here tonight. That's why.
I think his comments were good ones. Sayed?
Okay, let's start with, David, let me understand. Let's start with, David, let me understand what you just said about capital facilities. Can I say that capital facilities, the way that you explain is a wish list? A 20-year wish list of the projects?
I, I don't know if it's a wish list so much as it is if we are forecasting growth properly and we have a growth target of 2,100 units and we are following our plan for, for, and development comes how we think it will come, that these are the things that we think will be necessary in order for us to retain the level of, or to provide the level of service that we are saying that we will provide. Now, keep in mind that there is a, I don't know the right word for it, a bit of a delay, right? The state law anticipates that a, a infrastructure project or a service upgrade will come online roughly at the same time that people will move into housing. In reality, usually the service or the upgrade or the, you know, facility is delivered a little bit later. It, but there isn't a hard rule about when exactly it's delivered with regard to when people move into housing. There's a, there's a rule about that it'd be delivered within a certain number of years following the passage of, of a, of a plan. I, I, I have to go back and look at state law on that. I haven't talked about this in quite a while, so I'm basing it on past memory. But the, the point is, is that you roughly want your upgrade of infrastructure and service to coincide with when people are moving into new development.
Could that be a list of capital facility needs?
Absolutely.
Okay. So let me give you an analogy. It looks like that right now we're flying at the 30,000 feet, capital facilities. You're going down to the 10,000 and that becomes your six-year plan. And then when you're ready to touch down, that becomes your budget. Is that a good analogy?
That's a wonderful analogy.
Okay. So let's look at that. Now, let's go back to the capital facilities. You mentioned, and in here I have a question on it too, the level of service. Tyler, can we quantify that in somehow and define what is the level of service would be? As you know, in a traffic, we're dealing with the volume capacity, there is a ratio, there is a numerical value that you can attach to any part of the transportation, and that's a good way for the people to understand that. Can we be creative and create something like that to identify where the deficiencies and the needs are?
Absolutely. That, and that's a great question. And I'll say that I think of all the elements that you have reviewed, this is understandably coming across as the least complete, and that is because a lot of those metrics, they are defined by the city, but they, they reside in volume two, which you haven't had the opportunity to review. It will be part of the review package that comes forward before the May 16th meeting, and that will give you the opportunity to understand how the city sees the, you know, sufficient levels of service for parks. It may be measured in acreage of park per thousand residents or some sort of proximity of parks to households, similar to the vehicle.
Can you give us an example? I'm assuming that you've done a lot with the other jurisdictions. Can you give us an example, just one example, level of service that we, we understand? What is a, what is a level of service definition for, let's say?
Sure. Sure. And I, and I'm not entirely sure if this is the same unit of measure that the city of Sammamish is choosing to use in its level of service for parks as an example, but other communities break up the types of parks into different, into different types of parks. So there may be a regional park level of service, a community park, a neighborhood park. And let's take neighborhood parks. So that's a park that, you know, may typically be appropriate for, you know, residents living in, in a small, smaller neighborhood in the city. And an example level of service for that type of neighborhood park may be that per 1,000 residents, maybe two acres of parkland is available. These are, these are not entirely standardized numbers and are typically tailored to the city's needs, but that may give you a sense of like how we might measure the adequacy of a neighborhood park. Maybe two acres per 1,000 residents.
So the answer is yes, you may be able to come back with some of these quantify available level of service with different kind of facilities. I have also a question about, a reference to, on page 106 says CC2. What is EV adoption?
Electric vehicle adoption rate?
What does that mean?
That's the number of people that are choosing to buy electric vehicles when they are out shopping for cars.
And David, also you mentioned about one of the items as far as that we don't have a control is a switch from natural gas to electrical system. I thought that some cities they have already moved to ban, on the new construction, to ban use of the gas, gas burning appliances.
Yeah. So in, in Washington State, we are left with, we, we are required to implement the state Building Code Council adopted energy codes. We do not have the ability to require anything different than what the state Building Code Council adopts. To be factually correct about it, you can, but there's a bit of a torturous process to get your version of it approved. And I, I don't know of any cities that have actually tried to have their own version of the, the energy code adopted. So we are limited in our ability to ban new natural gas connections or to require that for new homes that they only be fueled with electric heating and cooling sources, or that for lifecycle replacement of existing residences, that they replace their furnaces, their gas-fired furnaces with electric heat pumps or electric equivalent baseboard heat or, or some other form of electric heat. We, we don't have that authority. However, the state Building Code Council did, through adoption of the recent state energy codes, make it, we'll call it punitive, for builders to use gas-fired furnaces and gas-fired appliances when calculating their score on the energy sheet. If you choose to use a gas-fired furnace, you are required to make up for that through extensive compensatory design, whether it be glazing or insulation or, or other requirements as part of the building, because at the end of the day, you have to tally your score to equal a certain score, and each of the different factors that feed into that result in a numeric, a numeric input into that equation. So what they've done is they have required ultimately that, they aren't required, they have disincentivized the use of gas in new homes, but that does not address lifecycle replacement.
And the last comment about utilities, and I brought up a number of times, David, to your attention, undergrounding utilities on the street, on transportation system, and you said that we don't have that much of authority?
The, the issue there is that, you know, we, we could require it through standards, but the issue is, is that the bill is passed back on to the customer because of the way utility rates are structured under the Washington Utility and Transportation Commission. And unless there is a change in how utility rates are structured and, and cost sharing or cost, I don't know the right term for it, but basically my understanding is, is if we wanted to underground something, the city would either have to come to the table with a pot of money to help offset the cost, or the, the cost would be paid, passed, passed back on to the, the rate payer. It would not be the utility that would ultimately foot that cost.
Or the third option is to actually mandate him to pay for that and put it in a, in a piggyback and give it to the city, and city keep that and use that for the future work and that undergrounding. Let me give you an example that, that concerns me. Let's say that there's a developer come to the city and they've got a frontage on, on 228, and the frontage is 200 feet. So when it comes to utility undergrounding, how you, how you deal with that? You let it go?
That, that level of utility, it depends on the type, whether it's a transmission corridor or a, whether it's a transmission line or whether it's a distribution line. And then it depends on the size of the transmission line and the size of the distribution line, and ultimately the configuration of all of the other utilities. And, you know, there, there are multiple utilities in the ground, so we, we do require that distribution lines be undergrounded, and that is part of, of development these days. On occasion, there are util, are transmission lines that are undergrounded. However, usually that is because of a conflict, aerial conflict or some other conflict, and it's a limited run that is undergrounded. So new construction in the city, when we are dealing with multiple homes, frontage, new roads being built, sidewalks, all that stuff, is undergrounded. If you were to just be building one home on a vacant lot, we do not require that you underground, because that's just, that, that doesn't make sense at that point.
Thanks very much.
A couple of comments I had. One, I think that I've realized I, I need to go back and look at this section again because it's a little bit stealthy. There's, there's a lot of actually important stuff here, and I hadn't thought about it carefully before. When I think about what this, the city's gonna celebrate 25 years this year, and when I think about what's happened in those 25 years, one of the biggest things that's actually the city has brought to the community is this topic right here by building facilities like the one we're in and, and the changes on 228. So that's actually a bigger deal than it comes across as. So one question I have is, I'm curious, I, I didn't recognize this before, but how is, how is this, maybe Tyler, you can answer this, how has this developed, this section developed or updated? And I say that because it feels like it, it should be in parallel with our sort of anticipated rough timing and plans for Town Center as an example, that has a big impact on this topic. And so they should be pretty parallel. Is that what's happened? Is that, or what is the source of how some of this section was developed? Or I should say updated, probably?
Yeah, just a quick comment, and then David can fill in on the details on how we're actually doing this as it pertains to Town Center as well. But generally speaking, this is perhaps the most collaborative element in the plan. That's not to say the others aren't collaborative, they certainly are. But this, this capital facilities element requires us to get all the departments together and to, not only to, to get an evaluation of how the facilities that exist are performing and the condition of the facilities, because it's not only about like adequacy and how much, but it's like identifying the things that are outdated and, and where facilities need to be upgraded, but also where they need to be expanded. And on the expansion piece, this is the opportunity to sit together and to ask the park staff, ask the public work staff, are there updates that need to be made to, made, excuse me, to the level of service that we are trying to achieve? Because that is, those are the golden numbers that we work backwards from when identifying, you know, the, the increased need in park space and, and, and in the other capital facility pieces in this element.
Do you want to add anything to that?
Just that with regard to Town Center, we use the, the zoning, the, the plan and zoning that's currently on the books, not, not what might be changed. We have been comparing that as we go through the Town Center amendment process to make sure that we are one step ahead. And if we do make changes, what that would look like and how that would be integrated into this. If that project happens to finish alongside this project, we would then integrate those into this at the very end of the process. More likely that is, the project is delayed now into the new year or into the next year, I guess, '25, and then we'll finish in '25, and in which case, if we have to make updates to this, we'll bring those back to you all in, in, as comprehensive plan updates in that year.
Another question I had is, what qualifies as, the confusing part is when we start to talk about level of service, it makes me think about if we're gonna add in the next 10 years between, I don't know, let's say 10,000 or 15,000 people to the population in Sammamish, city services are gonna be burdened by more people that want, you know, to come in and, and schedule the Beaver Lake Lodge or whatever it is, right? So does that fit into this category? The, this city's ability to provide services to the community? And, and then that also leads me to think about, so what about, you know, there's a lot of talk about a senior center and wanting to build a senior center. There's things like that that are actually capital facilities that are not strictly utilitarian utility in nature. They're, you know, an increasing population usually drives more amenities. It has in the last 25 years. I assume it will in the next 20 years. Does that fit into this? I mean, is, do those things that are not power lines and, and water pipes, they fit into this?
So I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll answer, and then I'll let Tyler correct me where I'm wrong here. Is, only if you include it as a component of your level of service.
Yeah, it's as simple as that. And this is why it's important for us to, to be coordinating across departments and in getting feedback from the planning commission and later the city council, because those are some, you know, less conventional services that the city may decide to establish a level of service for, recognizing that, as you said, Chair, the city could absorb, you know, 10, 15,000 more residents over the next 20 years. Well, what are the long list of, what are the longer list of services that need to be included in this type of element beyond the traditional ones?
Yeah. So I guess I would just wrap that by saying, I do think that there should be at least a, a nod to that, what you described as unconventional component of it in here, because there is no way that in the next 20 years, there's not gonna be a lot of that sort of thing that happens. And, and I really question in my mind whether, you know, the building that we're in even is adequate to service the needs of a community that's currently around 70,000 and could become 85,000 or 90,000. I don't know that that's gonna happen, but if it does, and all of, a bunch of those people are, you know, within a walk of this building, I mean, it just seems inevitable that what's happened within the city in the last 25 years is gonna continue. And I feel like some of that kind of unconventional service and capital facilities growth probably needs to be acknowledged in this section. Maybe not, you know, 12 pages, but at least some acknowledgement that that's gonna happen.
So the, the challenge with that is that the degree to which you start to formally include it as part of your level of service, even if unconventional, is the point when you then have to start to include it in your budget cycle. And if you lock yourself into a level of service for things that are not required by state law and are not required under GMA, they no longer become optional. And at that point, then you, you start to see your budget be driven more by what you've locked yourself into as opposed to what you think you can do on a year-to-year basis. So that, that's really the task here is to try and understand what is the right-size level of service that we are absolutely committing to versus what are those items that we think would be great to have, but that we wanna kind of wait and see if a grant comes our way or if the, you know, the revenue stacks up properly? Because if you look at your, your budget now, we have a very flat budget, if not a bit of a decline. So, you know, you, we've all heard about the, the budget forecasting and the, the work the city council's done on that, and the city manager has done a great job of trying to, to more closely forecast our costs than we have historically. But at the end of the day, there, there is a point where the two lines cross and we go into the red. So the more stuff you add as a requirement, then the, the sooner that that crossing of the lines and we get into the red arrives.
Yeah. I, I would just respond to say that the practical engineer side of my brain over here totally gets that and agrees with you completely. And the aspirational look into the future, hoping this plan guides the city side of my brain feels like we should at least attempt to have some hopes and dreams expressed in a engineering way within the plan. So anyway, figuring a balance.
Maybe there's a way to do both here, right? And try to divide them out into those that are absolutely locked down in level of service and must haves.
Or, or just not do it and leave the specificity out, but acknowledge that there will be things that the community will discuss and want to pursue that are not conventional, right? Just acknowledging that so that- Just acknowledging that so that people recognize that we're not ignoring what's going to happen in the community. And that's part of the plan, and that's okay. And somebody in the future who's sitting up here is going to figure out where to get the money to do it. But I hear you, once you write it down, then it becomes, yeah, totally get it. I took up too much time on this, anything else? Sayad, did you have?
I just was going to say that that's where the adoption concept is coming.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Could someone extend the meeting, please? Pick your time.
Motion to extend to nine o'clock.
Do we need that?
If we finish earlier.
Lots of people in the room, so yeah.
Second.
Moving to second, to extend to nine o'clock. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, no, thank you. Okay, anybody have anything else on capital facilities and utilities? Okay, let's move on then.
Okay. So as I scroll to our final element this evening, I must preface this, that this is an entirely new element to, not only to the city, but to the state. So last year, the state legislature passed a law that requires communities who do comprehensive plans to include a climate change and resiliency element. However, due to the phasing of the new law, cities in King County such as Sammamish are not mandated to adopt their climate change elements until 2029. But the city has chosen to go ahead and include kind of an abbreviated element that would eventually be in compliance with the law this year. And so that will mean that this is something that we move forward with this plan, but that there will be updates, you know, kind of required to be compliant with this new law in the next four years as well. And I'll just scroll down to the goals and policies and strategies page here. But of course, you're welcome to comment on anything. The one comment that has come through on Convio has been the suggestion to include a policy related to wildfire risk.
If I could add to what Tyler said, which agree with everything he said was really well put. One thing to keep in mind with this plan is this, you know, we did a lot of really great work with our Climate Action Plan. And the majority of that work, however, was really focused on the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled elements. And as such, you're going to see that those are really more largely represented here. There are a whole host of other requirements in House Bill, I think it's House Bill 1181, that are really centered around resiliency, equity. Let's think about some others. There's a whole nother section to this that we're going to be working on. So you'll see some language in here that you kind of might wonder, well, where does this come from? Well, it's coming straight out of HB 1181. And it's our first crack and our first attempt at trying to represent that in this plan. There will be a lot of refinement coming by 2029 when it is due. However, this was our first attempt at that. And there are quite a few things that are, you know, state-ish, county-ish, that you're seeing here that we probably could use some help on refining to make more Sammamish specific.
Okay, comments, I'll start down with Sayad. Do you have comments on this section?
No, not at this point.
Okay, Hisham?
You said it's a new section, right? So thank you for including it. Climate change is real. We're living it every day, we're seeing it around the world. The thing that's in my mind, it ties back to the previous section. How resilient are our public facilities to climate change? We are observing longer and colder winters. Some pre-planning, it will prevent a lot of damage, which becomes very expensive to repair if we were not ready for them.
That's a great comment, and that's one that I think that we will definitely go through this and look to see that that's in here. I think that helps highlight one of the big tensions that this chapter, I'm hopeful, in the work to come, I don't know that we're going to solve it here, starts to work to address is the tension between climate change and redundancy and resiliency of an electrical grid that is really largely overhead wires, overbuild and underbuild of overhead wires. And we also have that tension between that and our desire to retain trees. And we are seeing longer, drier summers, which results in trees being less resilient to large windstorms that tend to arrive right at the end of the dry season. So this really then feeds back into the whole wildfire issue and planning for wildfires and dealing with the collision between, literal collision between trees and the utility grid, which then causes, you know, an ignition source for wildfires. And we hear a lot about that in the news. You know, I'm born and raised in Hawaii. And one of my neighboring hometowns, I grew up on Maui, Lahaina Town burned down. And who would have ever thought that? So, you know, I have tons of family that's directly affected by that. So it's real, I hear you. And we want to make sure to include that in here.
Yeah, and you touched base on the second one that I was thinking about. It's the summers, the hotter summers, and the need for AC, which means the need for more electricity, which means then all the overhead wires and coordinating with the service providers to increase whatever is coming in.
Seda?
I had a lot to talk, but Hisham took it all. But I am happy that you guys are adding the wildfire strategy, because that was, you know, I was thinking about that, so thank you. Sorry, I'm not done.
Is that it? Sorry.
We are going to add that wildfire strategy to this section, right, David or Tyler?
I believe that, you know, we'll work on that. And we'll try and find the best place in here to place it, whether it's here in climate change and resiliency, which would be a great place for it. Or Tyler, I don't know if you have any other suggestions of places to include that?
Yeah, I mean, this is an obvious choice for that. But of course, it has large implications for land use as well. So we'll just navigate that and showing how the plan is interrelated across many elements.
I can say that there is quite a bit of work ahead of us as the state delayed adoption of the Wildland Urban Interface Building Code chapters. The legislature at the last minute ruled that the maps were not. There's a couple of different components to the building codes that were related to Wildland Urban Interface. There's, first of all, mapping where you stand, right? And understanding if you are in an area that's a high risk. And then the second part of that was really hardening and providing that the defensible space right around a structure. So using the right materials that are fireproof and creating a defensible space. Well, the state legislature ruled that the maps needed to be redone at a scale and usability that was more appropriate for cities. So the Department of Natural Resources is currently working on those maps. And we will be back to you again. I can't remember, I think it was two years out. So we'll be back to you in a relative short period relatively with those codes for you all to consider and hear about.
Okay, John?
Just a thanks to Mike Presko for catching the wildfire piece. I support that.
One thing, I just make an observation here. I think we talked about this a little bit before this one. It's interesting, because this is, by comparison, kind of very specific. So there's like numbers here, right? There are targets that are very specific. And I think that's a good thing. It's interesting, though, because it's different than some of the other sections, which are more general in nature, more aspirational, and by design probably have to be. So I don't know what that means, but it does feel a little bit like there's a definite difference there. The other question I had is, I guess I didn't quite follow. If the state mandate for this element of the comp plan was as of today, would this comply with what they, at least as we understand it right now, what they're requiring? Or are we taking a step and plan to refine it by the deadline?
So I'll give the first answer, then I'll let the consultant help with the more educated answer. My response would be no, it does not.
Yeah, and Chair, we can share with you some details on what the Department of Commerce and the state are suggesting be included in not just one, but there will be two sub-elements within a climate change and resiliency element. One is greenhouse gas production, excuse me, sub-element. And the second is a community resiliency sub-element. And as David said, I think a lot of the material that's come through from the Climate Action Plan gets at that GHG or greenhouse gas reduction and VMT or vehicle miles traveled reduction. And that's where you're seeing a lot of these quantified numbers on the screen here. But the community resiliency, the economic, or excuse me, the environmental justice, there's a lot in the new legislation about social and environmental equity. And so those are some elements in the law that the city would likely need to include in an update to this element to be fully compliant by its deadline of 2029.
Thanks. And I want to be clear, I'm not criticizing or suggesting that's what we should be doing. I think that the approach is correct. I just think that it's probably good to acknowledge that along the way, a few touchpoints. So people realize that this is not the final, what's going to be necessary in five years. It's a step in the right direction.
I'd actually celebrate a little bit, because we're way ahead of schedule.
Yeah. The one other thing, and my computer's not cooperating, so, and I don't recall. I do think one area that you could consider including in here is the role that the city could play and help. So backing up, I would say, one of the unique things about Sammamish in this region, with Sammamish in particular, is everybody loves to talk about the green, the canopy, green, 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 right? And that's great, it's a very, people landscape their yards, they landscape their everything, they landscape their car, right? I mean, they landscape everything. But climate change is going to cause the right kind of plantings to maintain that character of the city, to be different. And people are going to get a lot of mixed messages. It might be useful for the city to consider a role in helping the community understand, you know, these are the kind of trees we should plant instead, or these are the kind of plants. What constitutes a native plant, given the changes that are occurring? That kind of, that feeds into the fire reduction strategy, feeds into some of the parks and open space strategy. So I think it might fit here as a resiliency topic. Anybody else on this? Sayad, go ahead.
Just one general question. I'm assuming that there is total consistency between the goals and the policies of the climate and the Climate Action Plan?
Total consistency is a tall order, but we're working on, yeah, there's consistency between them. This is the high-level policy direction that is really represented by the Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan gets into much more detail about how you might achieve it and breaks it down into things that are more bite-sized. So this is an extraction from the Climate Action Plan. All of these numbers are in direct alignment with it, they come from the plan. The City Council also passed an ordinance setting the city's climate objectives, or, excuse me, a resolution, setting the city's climate objectives. So these numbers are all set by resolution. At least the VMT and the greenhouse gas emissions, GHG and vehicle miles traveled, VMT numbers are set by resolution.
So let me rephrase my question, is there any inconsistencies?
Not that we're aware of it. If anyone finds them, please do let us know.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else on this topic? Tyler, do you have anything else? Or David, are we kind of done with this set for tonight?
I don't. Only thank you all. This has been a highly productive meeting, and we appreciate the feedback and the draft, and look forward to the next version.
Just a reminder also, the next version will be version two. You'll get a crack at that. And then we'll be pushing out another version after that as your public hearing version. That'll be version three. Then it'll go to the City Council in September. And that will likely include any edits that you make as part of your public hearing, which will then be version four. The City Council will review that, make some changes. They'll get version five, they'll get one more chance to review it. Then those changes from version five will be rolled into version six, will ultimately be the final public hearing version the City Council will have in December of 2024. So quite a bit of runway ahead of us still, but this is the most pivotal point in the whole process. We really appreciate all the feedback.
So let me say, thanks, Tyler. You could tell Jeff he can take a vacation whenever he wants. He did a good job, thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on this.
Go ahead, Sayad.
At what point are we going to see the addendum to this? The technical analysis and all that? It would make sense to have that available to us.
With the next draft.
With the next draft?
Yep.
Thank you.
Two things. One is, I think we should all kind of acknowledge that this has been a lot of work that we're kind of just on the receiving end of. And a great job, best, that along, Tyler, to the folks, you know, that have worked on this. Really appreciate the work that's gone into it. I really feel good about the direction that we're headed and the opportunities we've had to have input. I think that's all good stuff, I really appreciate it. One ask that I have is, I would ask if in the next version, when we discuss this in this room, if we could set aside five minutes to talk about how the comp plan addresses or intentionally doesn't address the topic of tree canopy and trees in the community? You know, you heard some of the public comments. It's been a common topic since 2017. I remember specifically some comments at that point. So I think it'd be good to just sort of address it head-on and in a five-minute way, right? So the comp plan does this, and the comp plan doesn't do this, because it's handled elsewhere. And that might be a good thing to acknowledge the comments from the community.
That's great feedback, we'll definitely make that happen. The one other thing I want to say is, we had queued up in the Agenda Bill tonight, a discussion on what we're calling the Southeast Fourth Parcels. However, we've been doing some additional analysis on that, and we are not prepared this evening to present alternatives in a recommendation to the Planning Commission. So we'll be bringing that back at the next Comprehensive Plan meeting, where we'll walk through what we looked at and what our recommendation is. We're learning a little more about some things like HB 1110, which is the, you know, it's the middle housing bill that are going to shed some light on our ultimate recommendation there. So we appreciate your patience, we are still working on it. Haven't lost track of it, just quite a bit going on in the background.
Great, okay, thanks again. Let us move on to agenda-related public comment for this evening. So seven minutes per person. I know Frank had a comment he's going to make. But who else, yeah, okay, go ahead, Frank. And then we'll see who else has comments.
Microphone.
Crazy economic map. And it was obvious, and someone finally pointed it out, that we don't have the transportation corridors that all of those other facilities have. And nor do I want 405 running through the middle of downtown Sammamish. So, but one thing that did strike me in the conversation that was going on is that as you talk about economic growth, it wasn't clear to me that you had really decided yet both the purpose and the intent of that growth. So, you know, what are you trying to accomplish in the economic growth? I mean, we all like getting more money. I mean, that's, but how that money is spent and its intent is every bit as important to the reason that you generated and how you generate it as to what it ultimately is used for. So if the purpose of that is to provide more facilities and amenities for the community that we want, that's one thing. It's another to say, hey, we've got a Google in our backyard, too, and look at the 40-story building that's there, that's a different thing. And so I think one of the challenges that we all have as citizens And so I think one of the challenges that, that we, we all have as citizens of this community and you as a committee is to look at how we produce that revenue and new ways to produce the revenue as our economic models change. I looked at the, at the interesting comments about work from home. My wife works from home. She's not probably classified in those numbers up there because she works for a company that's headquartered in Seattle, that's international in scope. And there's, you don't see that, I don't believe, reflected in your numbers. So I'm thinking that there may be new ways to capture that data and ways to perhaps capture even revenue off of some of that. That we need to take a look at is, we should be encouraging people to work from home? We should be encouraging businesses to do that? We should find out what those businesses need in our communities to support those workers working from home? Whether that's what used to be called the one-man office center, right? You could come in, you'd work it set up, and you could do your Zoom calls, you could do your meetings, you had a business facility to do that, to support that kind of work environment and contract that out to various Microsofts and Googles and whatever for their employees that work here, to encourage them to work at home, to help you achieve your decreased mileage goals, your decreased greenhouse goals. So it's not a very simple answer to trying to develop economic growth and achieve a lot of the other goals that you want. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for discussion around those ideas. So these are nice, but I got to tell you, I'm kind of a nuts and bolts guy. I, I like to get it done kind of guy. And I see a lot of platitudes and big words up there, and if you ask what they mean, there's no meat behind them. They just sound good. It's kind of like the AI-generated conversations we get these days. And that's a good place to start. They generate conversation and they create thoughts. That's what we're doing here right now. But you've really got to drill into some of these, and I don't know the appropriate time. Now is probably not, there's just not enough meat on the bone to do that. But I think it is the time to outline strategies and questions that as you move toward the ultimate timeline, 2044 or whatever it is, you have something to bounce against, and you can hand that down, whether those are... I, I don't know what tool you use. Mind maps come to, to my mind. I'm a math major, all right? And I'm a super analytical. So those are the kind of things that come to mind. But anyway, that's kind of what I wanted to say, my just observations of listening to some of this. I think you're doing a great job. I wouldn't want your job. It's a real challenge. And it's hard, I think it's hard to stay focused on any, you can go so far down into any one of these things that it's hard to come back out of the weeds. And so decide your purpose, decide the goal you want to achieve, develop your strategies to achieve those, reflect upon them, develop the tactics to achieve those. This is basic stuff, guys. Anybody who knows about it, it's basic stuff. But stay at that level. Don't go down into the weeds and always come back and ask the question, what are we trying to accomplish? For whom and to what end? Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. That's good stuff. And I think we have our first future volunteer for the Economic Development Commission. Yeah. Okay, who else for agenda-related public comment? Mary?
Hi, Mary Victor, Sammamish, 24 years. Thanks for coming. It's really cool to hear other people talk. And I usually talk on stormwater. That's where the downhillers don't like the water coming down. And he talks on the fires. That's where that Christmas tree that didn't get put away, it burns everybody's houses above. So thank you very much. And wildfires also aren't really great for wildlife corridors because they need all those trees. Anyway, I'm going to cover a couple of things here. On the shoreline, David, when I read shoreline code and I read critical areas code, they're kind of parallel, but there's a whole Title 25 for shoreline, and we're working on critical areas this year. So I guess my goal would be, whenever we do those things, we should think, because the first thing you do is you avoid those areas. The next thing you do is you minimize anything that happens in those areas. And then the third thing you do is you mitigate in sequencing first onsite and then offsite. So I would like to see some coming together. Also, when you look at the geo-hazards, there's the erosion and the landslide and the no disturbance areas and all the other things, and the drains too areas. And then there's the seismic, which are along the lakes. So you've got seismic plus erosion plus landslide equal geo-hazards, and we're coming together on that. So I think that's very important. One thing I'm not seeing, and I think maybe because it's volume two stuff, is there's quite a few maps that are useful that the city has that are either in the volumes or I've gotten PDF versions of them. And so Tyler had mentioned about trying to make the maps better and readable. If each map that is put in, if the city creates a PDF that people can get that's pretty detailed, then you can zoom in on it. And I know they don't like to go to the parcel level, but that really helps. I would also encourage you that any of the maps that are in the current comp plan that are not necessarily in the 2024 version, that we keep those around as an appendix or somewhere like the archive maps or something, because the landslide, the erosion, the seismic and the drains too areas are super important, including the steep slopes maps, which the only place that they appear is in the comp plan. So I would like those not to go away. In general, I think the rule should be is if you have something, it's a tool that can be used or is used, and you haven't gotten the new thing to replace it, don't just get rid of it because then we forget it. And right now, we're changing websites all the time because nobody ever likes the new one, and we're losing the stuff that used to be on there. So I really think we need to keep that going. Also, I'm talking tonight on, I'm going to speak to something that framework needs to hear. I have not figured out how our public comments that go on here at the end of the meeting, when the consultants go off, they don't ever get written up, they don't get put in the maestries. I really feel like we talk a lot, and it's not possible that our stuff goes forward. So somehow, Evan's Magic or really listening to the thing or something needs to get at least topics put in. I know when they were doing Stormwater Code, the emails I would send, and Stephanie Sullivan would just copy and paste a portion of it, and that was what went in the matrix, and then they'd say noted, or we're changing this or whatever. And then that way, I knew it was in. But it's pretty frustrating, spend all the time that we do reading and then speaking and not seeing it anywhere in the minutes or seeing it in any of the matrices and knowing that we have all these meetings, and then we're going to have the public hearing, and if we didn't get it in, boom, nothing gets adopted. So I'd like to skip that by fixing out how we do that. So a couple of things I'm going to talk on. So that, that economic development map that people were talking about, I'm glad that it stirred conversation. Where that comes from is there's a guy, Chuck Marone, who does Strong Towns. There's a lot of Strong Towns videos online. And they're trying to say that when you have a town, the center areas, which are your high-income areas, like you see in the Bellevue peaks, those end up paying for all of suburbia. The problem that we have in our city is we don't have that center peak. It's all flat because 85% of our city is just single-family homes. So the way our city's going to make money is they're going to raise your taxes, raise your taxes. Right now, there's a cap on that, and when you can't raise it anymore, you're going to reach that crossover point where your income and your expenses are going to meet, and you don't have a financially stable city anymore. That's why we need Town Center to have an increase number, just like you've been heard mentioned, about 7,000 increase because we need that or we're not going to be financially sustainable. The, the graphic of the 3D graphic that was done by somebody called Urban 3, I had seen it, they use it in Bozeman, Montana, they have a tax density map. I suggested it to Jeff as a consultant. He said, yeah, that's good, we should stick it in. What I would like to see changed with that, and here I'm speaking, but the consultant isn't on, so I don't know how this ever gets translated. I think if you took the map, right now, they've kind of zoomed it in so you can see Seattle and Bellevue. I'd rather that they tilt the map so you see more Sammamish and maybe make two images, make it so you can see the wider view to see that we don't have a lot of the red, and then do what Sudha was saying about, you know, do it with carnation and Duval. And then if you do it a different angle, you'll see those peaks aren't very high. And the reason that those were used in the online videos by Strong Towns and Urban 3, and they're talked about by a guy who's just not bikes and it's orange, and he's really funny because he does what Chuck Marone does, but he does it faster and he does it funnier. They would say, the reason you want a mixed-use area like Town Center is those are the centers that really, really make the money. You don't have to have downtown Bellevue, but you can have a mixed-use center and you can get the income from it. Like I've heard recently, my husband's sort of the news hound, and I don't have social media presence, but I guess Starbucks closed in Kohani? And people are like, why did Starbucks close? Can't it come back? Well, probably not enough people around go anymore. So if we want to invite any businesses into this city, the economics are that you've got to have the cluster of people there that are going to use it. And if they get tired of shopping there and they go elsewhere, if they're always driving to Izaqua to get to Costco or Redmond, they're not going to do it here. So in Montana and Bozeman, it's very similar in size. You've heard me talk about it before. I do own land there, and I also do their double meetings. They have an economic vitality group, they have an economic development committee, and they have a guy, David Fine, that did a presentation, and I didn't see it, and I need to go back and find out what date he did it. And they talk about, you need like, and I'm just going to whip this number off, about 3,300 units for a commercial center to work. And if we don't have that core of units, it doesn't work. And that's why all this stuff that we're talking about is so terribly important. So I'm glad that the 3D graph is getting used, but I think you guys are misinterpreting what it's for. It's to show you that Sammamish is so flat, we don't have any of those peaks, and all of that is subsidizing the suburban areas. So if you want your streets fixed and all those dead-end cul-de-sacs fixed, we need to have a Town Center, and we need it to be bigger. So thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mary. Who else?
Michael Mattis, 69, 222nd Place, Southeast Sammamish. Hello again. Less than a minute after I walked out of City Hall two weeks ago, I received an email from a land use attorney with TriPoint Homes, who had been attending the Planning Commission meeting remotely. TriPoint is a developer with agreements in place pending an upzone to purchase four properties surrounding our house, two immediately adjacent to our lot, two contiguous to those lots. And then they're in negotiations with Fifth, also adjacent to our lot. This is all inside the redevelopment zone proposed for the Southeast Fourth Corridor. That attorney, possibly attending remotely tonight, she said she would be, asked for a meeting, which we accepted, and then held by Zoom just a couple of days ago. Our intent was to listen, which we did. Four residents from three households on our block joined the call. Others from our block were less sanguine about hearing anything that a developer might have to say, but we went and we listened. They, our neighbors share our concerns about the land use proposal for our block and for the Southeast Fourth Corridor. During the call, we were shown two versions of TriPoint's preliminary plans for the aggregated land. We appreciated the sharing of that information and what TriPoint characterized as concessions on their part to address some of our concerns, and we said so. We said that we appreciated that. The attorney then appealed to us for our cooperation. We explained that we would be amenable to cooperating where our interests aligned, and that offer stands now and will continue to stand. The attorney went on to state, and I don't fault her for saying this, as she works for a developer pursuing their own economic self-interest, and it was simply a statement of fact, she said, you can work with us or you can work against us. Again, there were four of us from our neighborhood on that call. We all took note, we conferred afterward to make sure we heard and understood the same thing. I bring this up for a couple of reasons, not to single out that attorney or to single out TriPoint. I, I worked in the corporate world for decades and dealt with many developers along the way. Even if we were to attempt to memorialize some cooperative understanding with TriPoint, there would be no practical way for us to enforce such an agreement with a publicly-held company with $4 billion in annual revenue, 6,000 employees, and a legion of in-house attorneys. They have a lot of them. Even if we did come to an understanding, developers flip projects all day long. They assemble land and flip the project to another developer. It happens all the time for any number of reasons. Any, any agreement we arrived at with this developer may well not be honored by the next. And again, we would not have the legal resources to contest. This is why we believe it is so vital for the city to address issues of transition and scale at the land use level and to take into account the built environment. Developers will do what developers do, which is within the parameters of, within the parameters the city lays out for them, they will optimize. Remember, the footprint of that redevelopment zone is orders of magnitude smaller than the Town Center. 60-foot-high structures don't compute there as they might inside the Town Center, as they do inside the Town Center Core. R18, immediately opposite the lowest-density part of the Town Center, Wedding Cake, makes the Wedding Cake concept itself obsolete. I proposed, in the, in a reading a couple of weeks, I proposed to the Community Development Department an alternative whereby the city applies a formula. If the bordering properties are one, such as ours and a couple of other of our neighbors, cap the first step up to R6. If the bordering property is already R4 or R6, then, then, okay, step up to R8 and so on until you converge on a redevelopment zone core where you're stacking dwellings, you know, maybe three-story condos and flats and so forth, with a height limit, a reasonable height limit, taking into consideration the built environment of 35 or 40 feet, not 60. Again, scale matters and transition matters. We're outside the Town Center. That, you know, the Town Center is where the development was supposed to go. I'm not saying exclusively, but that was where it was supposed to be happening now. It was set aside for that purpose. It has the capacity in the current zoning to accommodate height and density. We would prefer it to go there. We're not trying to be obstructionist about those parcels contiguous to ours, but we are saying, please apply, as I have suggested in a class, please apply some sense of reasonableness to it. That's my main, I see I have a minute left. I just wanted to say to the speaker earlier who talked about wildlife corridors, and this bears directly on the development that will happen on the other side of our fence. Our, our property is a playground for deer, bobcat, coyote. We had a couple of bears walk through a few months ago. We had a runaway goat on our front porch just a couple of months ago. We, every spring, we have a doe with fawns that just hangs out in our woods. That's all going to go. And it, almost no matter what the density is. But again, please, please huge to scale and transition and whatever decision you ultimately make. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Who else? Paul.
Hello, Planning Commissioners, Paul Stickney, Sammamish. I constructed this comment truly during the agenda process. It was not made in advance. I think real good conversations, and I'd like to start out with, I sent in a lot today, but it sort of builds around something that is authentic and genuine that hasn't happened in Sammamish. And that is, as I've stated before, what are the housing needs for people that live and work here, economic segments, demographic groups, workforce, relative to our housing supply? It's not about ability to pay, it's about ability to stay. So what I've been working on and suggesting is that we optimize size in our Town Centers not to meet regional needs, not to expand what I call the circle of housing, which, by the way, has been shrunk significantly by the city since King County days, by over half, by the way. Something to talk about. But the purpose that I'm working on, the aim, is this gentleman talked about. I think we have a far stronger community that is richer across the board. If in small parts of our city, we have optimized housing supplies based on authentic, genuine need internally, not manufactured externally. So I'll internally, not manufactured externally. So I'll start with that. A couple of comments. David, I admire. He's got tremendous amount of knowledge in his brain. I have some knowledge. Something that he mentioned that I happen to know, so I'll share, is improvements need to be built within six years of them getting started. And our growth target, correct, Sammamish was in the lowest cohort of cities and towns. And our share based on, on population was about 6,200 housing units. I can understand the sentiment of past councils looking at feeling that the city was overdeveloped in the past. And I agree. And in my opinion, we've been overdeveloped in large, single-family homes, but we've been underdeveloped in different and diverse housing to meet internal needs over time. So to remedy a combination of misdevelopment, I suggest that we take a pivotal moment and really consider, and I'd like to state again for the record, this isn't about manufacturing a need the community doesn't have. It's a question of do we meet needs to allow people to stay and what are the consequences. On PDF C that I sent you guys today, I list seven things. Three go together and another four to go together. I'd really like to talk to you and I'll reach out and give an opportunity to chat. And if you'd like to meet, cool. And if not, that's fine. It's not an obligation. But the main increase that I'm recommending in the three enhancements to the comp plan is the 6,000 units in town center, sum to Eastman, and then plan for the future, how many more units are needed based on quantified factors. And by the way, David is correct. This is one of those things that you can't quantify. What it is, is it's a legislative decision based on 20 to 30 quantified factors, which can be quantified. So it comes down like doing a house appraisal. What's your opinion of those factors over time? And what are the consequences of meeting internal needs that are authentic and genuine or not? Because there's radically different outcomes on each of those ways. The seven things I'd, I'd like to chat with you about is adding 6,000 housing units to town center. How does that compare to the 2007 EIS? How does that compare to the realities of the number of single-family homes, if you build large houses like we have had, that have been reduced during development regs, phase one and two, and phase three is coming up? And a third thing, how does this recommendation compare to the 7,000 housing units that have been built in Sammamish since incorporation? King County had around 3,500 in the pipeline. Sammamish has built about 3,500. 6,000 of those, 7,000 have been single-family, 1,000 multifamily. How does what I'm talking about compare to that? I've, I've, I've got all that. I'd like to show each of you that because this is a pivotal moment to decide, do we stay with the housing supplies we have and not meet internal needs for lifetime and future legacies based on who we are as a community? Or do we meet those needs and what are the consequences? And I know I keep saying that, but that's important. That's what has never happened here. The four other things I'd like to chat about is the riches that will be enabled by meeting those needs, mostly in four categories, short term and long term, for residents in the city, financially, qualities of life, social fabric, and environmentally. There's a lot to all that. Another thing is, I believe that this type of development is net positive, low impact, and would like to share why. You can evaluate it for yourself. I'll be candid, clear, real, direct, nothing hidden, all out in the open with what those things are for, for you to consider. The other thing is, well, no, actually, I've already said these two. Allow people to stay over time and, and the housing supplies for, for lifetime and legacy. I will close with this. If Sammamish had pretty good housing supplies, like Mercer Island's got 30% multifamily housing and we've got 15%. If we were well balanced for our own, I wouldn't be up here talking about it. But we're not. There's consequences to doing it and consequences not. I think it's time to compare those and see which way is most net positive for the community. Appreciate the chance.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else in the room here? Evan, anybody online?
Yes, we've one hand raised. Mr. Eastman, I will go ahead and promote you.
James Eastman, Sammamish, Washington. Starting to do a little bit of summer planning. Two of my teenagers go down to do a summer camp every year in Oregon. And they have a ball. And I think it's a little bit unfair that my youngest son and my oldest daughter don't get to go. So I'm like, what could we do as fun as what they're going to be doing down at their camp? So I started looking at it and me and my wife, we love to go to Victoria for a day or two and e-bike. I'm like, well, my kids have never been to a foreign country. Maybe we'll do that. Let's get their passports started now. And then I'm like, well, you know, what can I do for an entire week in Victoria? And I'm like, well, we can e-bike up and down the harbor for a day or two. That's awesome. The Bouchard Gardens. But then, you know, I could go up Vancouver Island and there's all sorts of quaint towns and awesome Airbnbs. But then, none of them are connected by bike. We won't have a boat. We won't have kayaks, you know. All this stuff that, you know, we'd want to do up there for a week would cost a fortune. And in my mind, I started saying, why would I even want to go up there? Like, all the things I want, I have right in Sammamish. Like, and it's almost for free because we're already in Sammamish. And the lifestyle we live is like this magical summer lifestyle. My kids, even as young as 11, 12, 13, they go off for the day. When they annoy us, we send them out of the house. They'll go to Redmond Town Center on their bikes for hours at a time and eat and play. And they'll go to the library in Redmond. They'll go to the $2 movies on Tuesday afternoon. As a family, on Thursday nights, we can go to movie in the park on our bikes. Fridays, Saturdays, they have concerts in the park. On any morning, we can go walk the trail while it's nice and cool. The waves don't kick up on the lake until about 2 o'clock, so we can wakeboard up until then. Or if the waves have already kicked up, hey, we get out on the tube. We're tubing. Or maybe we don't want a tube. Maybe we just want to float in the lake and just tie off to the dock. So we have just this amazing summer lifestyle and we're connected. And it's just magical. With the new trail going to Issaquah, we're going to have to add that in. Anywhere in Redmond, we can, we can go. On Sundays, it's a little irreverent. I show up to church in my shorts and my t-shirt because we rode our bikes to church up on the plateau. So pretty much every day, there's something to do and it is fun. Sammamish is clean. It's safe. It's a wonderful place to be. And a lot of this exercise today, I've heard a lot about what we don't have. We don't, we're not Bellevue. We're not these guys. We don't have the freeway. We don't have the commercial. What do we have? Well, I heard the forest over and over again. Our forests are spectacular. I'm proposing ecotourism on 80 acres of our property because of that very reason. I don't think we realize what's in our own backyard, but this used to be a destination city where we had four, four resorts where people would come for the lake alone. And then you add in all the other things that I just talked about that are all reachable by e-bike and with light rail. I mean, shoot, I'm probably going to send my 15, 16-year-olds to ride their bikes up to Microsoft and hey, once you're there, jump on the light rail, put your bike in a locker and go get dinner at Bellevie Square. Go think you're cool and walk, walk through the mall, do whatever. Like, the potential for our city, where we're at now and going forward, I think people just don't realize it. And I invite you guys to come, come ride e-bikes with me. I have a bunch. I'm going to test drive the trike. If, if one of you feel comfortable on a bike, I think I'm probably going to buy an e-trike. And we'd go from 350 feet. I mean, we're not down at the 50-foot elevation, which is where the trail is. And some of the goals I think we can add to this comp plan that, that I've referenced and I talked about, but now I'm going to get really specific. One is to put a hiking trail in from the Evans Creek Preserve all the way to the landing park, dedicated hiking trail. It'd be a large segment of the Emerald Necklace. Number two, put a bike path in that's dedicated for either bikers or for walkers with a max 10% slope, starting at the 525-foot elevation on the plateau, all the way down to the 50-foot elevation of the trail. Get people across the parkway. That's the scariest thing with my kids in letting them go out is knowing they have to cross the parkway. I lecture them over and over again about that. Let's put that in our comp plan as a goal. Let's look forward to light rail. Let's add connecting to light rail is one of our goals. And then for economic development, I mean, if we can add some lodging in our beautiful forest on, on my acres of property, like, that could be a huge value to the city. People coming here for destination tourism to experience all the wonderful things that I just talked about. And then, I mean, look down the road. We have all that land at the landing park there along the beach. Like Mercer Island has a beach club. Like, why can't we have a beach club? There's this beautiful, like, why can't we have somewhere to go for people to rent kayaks or rent boats or sail or whatever? I mean, why shouldn't parents be able to just kick their kids out in the morning time and say, hey, go down to your rowing class or go to your selling class and have them ride their bike from, you know, town center or wherever on a safe network to get there and then come home at night? I mean, I, I go, a lot of BJ specials down there in Redmond, they're open till 11 at night. Like, we'll go there past 9 o'clock for a pizzookie on the trail in the dark with our lights on and it's wonderful. We'll ride back at 11, 11:30 at night. Hopefully, I'm not breaking any laws doing that. But it literally is a lifestyle that is available to everyone if we just make a few changes, especially to our city residents. So I hope that will add these things to the comp plan. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anyone else? All right. Anything else from staff? I learned to ask this time.
Thank you. Yes, two things. First, a reminder for planning commissioners and, excuse me, everyone in the room, that the city will be hosting an Earth Day event this Saturday from 11 to 2 at the Beaver Lake Lodge. It's a great event. It's put on by the Parks Department. It's a lot of fun. I encourage everyone to show up at the event. Rich's team will be set up to capture video interviews, to build a video for the 25th Jubilee celebration. Planning commissioners, I encourage you to stop by, give five minutes to Rich's team, answer some questions. Anybody in the room, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but anybody's able to, to provide an interview that could, that could be included in the video. So that's this Saturday, 11 to 2. So that's item one. The second item, I'm really excited to introduce next to me, Lena Levishova.
Yes.
She is, recently joined the city up at the front desk and will be, is our new planning commission coordinator and eventually will be in this seat here. And we're really excited to have her here. So welcome, Lena.
Welcome, Lena.
Nothing else.
Thank you. And let me just, as we close the meeting, say thanks to all of you who participated this evening. The way this works best is when people show up and make comments. I just want to express my appreciation. And I think on behalf of the commissioners, I really appreciate people participating because otherwise, we're just up here talking to ourselves and that gets pretty boring, let me tell you. Well, I guess we talked to Evan and David somewhat too, but it's the way that local democracy and local government really works is when people participate. So thanks. I appreciate it. All right. I'm going to say, would someone move to close the meeting?
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn for this evening. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.